We got 6:01, so we're gonna get started with our meeting. I would just like to welcome everyone to the City of Delray Oaks Planning Commission Meeting, and we will start with roll call.
Commissioner Jack Shaw?
Yep.
Commissioner Krieger?
Here.
Commissioner Hallick?
Present.
Commissioner Burton?
I'm here.
Commissioner Wood? No, Denise?
I don't see her.
Yeah, she's at a doctor's appointment, and she said she may or may not be able to dial in later.
Okay, okay, thank you, Scott. Oh, Vice Chair Hayworth?
Present.
Chairman Donaldson?
Here. Okay, our next item is the consent agenda, and that's to adopt the June 10th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting minutes. So if you could take a look at those, and I will accept a motion.
Move we accept the consent agenda and submitted.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Our next item is public comments. Anyone wishing to address the Commission on matters not appearing on the agenda may do so now. Is there anyone out there?
I don't see any hands or anything, so...
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. I'd just like to take this opportunity to announce that Kim Carvallo will be leaving the city. Her last day will be on or about October 9th, and she is going to be with her family, her daughter and her grandson, in Phoenix. And while we're still trying to figure out how we'll live without her, we are very happy for her and her family, and I just wanted to take the opportunity to share that with the Commission. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dino, for that, and thank you to Kim for everything that you've done. I know I'm gonna miss ya, and you've done so many great things for the city over such a long period of time. We're so grateful for everything that you've done, and I think I speak on behalf of the rest of the Commission that we're really gonna miss you, so thanks for everything.
No, you're very welcome. It's been my pleasure.
Kim, I have no cry button on my horn. I'm sorry to hear that.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is our reports, the building activity report for August. If you would like to take a look at that, and if there's any comments or any corrections that need to be made, please let me know.
It's nice to see there's some activity.
Okay, any other issues or comments? Okay, not seeing any. Move on to the next item, which is old business, and there's none. Next item is new business, and that's why we're here, and that's to consider the city comment letter to the airport regarding the airport master plan for the EIR addendum. And this is an item that I specifically asked to come to the Planning Commission and be agendized, just so that we could eliminate any ambiguity, allow the planning commissioners to make any comments regarding the letter, and ultimately send a clear message. Within the packet, there are three letters, and essentially they say the same things. They reiterate that the general plan does not allow for a access road from the airport into Delray Oaks. It's specifically against the general plan and has been for almost two decades now. It also talks about issues that, or concerns, that we have with traffic, noise, and drainage runoff. The latest letter also includes the FAA finding and the Airport Board Chairman's comment at one of our city council meetings. So with that, I would like to turn it over to the city manager, so you can provide some background for us.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioners, members of the public, the item before you today is a draft city comment letter on the airport's addendum to their environmental impact report on their master plan. What triggered this letter was the Airport Board's action at their last board meeting on very short notice to the public to approve an addendum to their EIR, which made some specific changes to their, acknowledged some specific changes to their master plan and discussed them in the environmental document, the addendum. Those included moving the north side access road from near term to long term. And while that may sound on the surface like a good thing, it is in contravention with our general plan, and it's in contravention with their statements in their Federal Aviation Administration environmental assessment, and it contravenes comments made by the Board Chair at our, at our club meeting, a council meeting, rather. And so this letter is in response to that addendum, and contains not only the issues that the Chair referred to in terms of noise, traffic, the master, our general plan, and environmental impacts, but also addresses the timeliness of notification to city staff regarding the addendum, which in this case was, I believe they noticed on a Friday by mail, of a meeting early the following week with a weekend in between. It also reiterates the desire to have a roundtable formed that would allow for more consistent and transparent communications between jurisdictions surrounding the airport and the airport district itself, and contains attachments, which include our previous two letters, as well as environmental documents. So the purpose of tonight, Alex Lorca and I are here to answer any questions that you might have, or the members of the public may have, and to allow the crafting, if there are edits desired or needed, to this letter. And then staff is requesting that the Planning Commission recommend that the city council approve the letter as recommended by you, whether it's in its current form or edited, for submission to the airport. And of course, we will bring this letter to the city council on the 22nd of September. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and the city attorney is here as well. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any questions for the city manager? Okay, no questions, then what I'm gonna do is allow each planning commissioner to provide comments, and I'll start with Commissioner Burton, and then after all the planning commissioners have had the opportunity to provide comment, then I'll take it out to the public and see if there's any additional comments that would like to be, anyone would like to make. So I will start with Commissioner Burton.
Okay, thank you. I do have one question, and I'll start that with maybe a statement. I'm searching in my mind, to me, it's easy to come up with objectives for something like this letter, and we've sent previous ones. It's easy for me to see the city trying to have an objective of stopping this access road from happening in some sense. So I may be wrong with that objective, but it seems like that's our objective, and my question comes from, please, and maybe it's two questions. If I'm wrong about the objective, please clarify the objective for me from a city standpoint. And either way, whatever the objective is, or however you want to state it, Dino, please tell me what effect you think this letter will have on our ultimate...
Thank you, Commissioner Burton. You muted at the end there, but I think I got the question. It was what impact this letter will have on our relationship with the airport?
No, on the fact, I stated the objective as stopping this road from going through this access road. If that's wrong, please repair that, and then tell me about how, what this letter will do to help us along with our city objective.
Right. Great question. So the answer to the first part of the question is, the city staff's objective is to comply with our general plan. Among other things, that's generally, we are trying to implement the city's general plan, and it's a, there's a very clear prohibition in our general plan against a north side access road to the, from the airport through Delray Oaks. And so we're simply enforcing our general plan through a comment letter that is, as I said, the third comment letter of its kind, which is routine when an environmental document is made public for comment. So these are, all three of our letters were comment letters on environmental reports of various kinds, California and federal reports, and this is no different. The difference of timing is that the airport did not put this environmental document out for a longer public review period, which by the way, they were not obliged by law to do, but certainly one would reason that as good neighbors and as a jurisdiction trying to build rapport with the surrounding cities, coordination prior to the adoption of their environmental addendum would have been done, was not in this case, and we point that out in the letter. So our objective is to stake out the perspective of our elected council and the appointed commission, and we have used as substance for those positions, our general plan and concerns that our residents have expressed over the past several years, to ensure that those become part of the public record. So this transitions to your second point, your second question. This becomes part of the public record going forward. And the airport has tried to build this road for decades. I suspect they will continue to try for decades. So this is not something that's gonna necessarily fade away, and what we want to do from the city's perspective is ensure that the record is clear and that it's well documented what our city position is, and in this case, unlike the previous two letters, there will be no ambiguity what the Planning Commission's position is, nor what the city council's position is with regard to the airport's plans.
Very good, Dino. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Okay, Commissioner Burton, any other comments, questions?
That's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, I'll move on to Commissioner Jack Shaw, and then next up would be Vice Chair Hayworth. So Commissioner Jack Shaw, any questions, comments?
I think he dropped off. I don't see him.
Okay, yeah, I don't see him either, so we'll move to Commissioner Hayworth.
Thank you, Scott. You know, I don't know why they keep coming back with this stuff, but I guess Dino's explained that, that they need to do their due diligence, but it seems like we're beating a dead horse. I mean, I don't know how many years ago it was, we actually even did a planning commission visit of the site to see what they were trying to do. I don't know, the letter's pretty clear. I can't think of anything that needs to be added. I think the first two letters would have been sufficient, but I get it, and I'm in favor of the letter as it is.
Okay, thank you. I'll next move to Commissioner Hallick. Any questions, comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did have just a few questions. However, City Manager Pick, as per usual, has explained the city's stance on this issue as he has since the beginning, since back in time, the original, the most recent presentation from the Airport Board. So thank you for being very clear in our stance on this issue, Mr. City Manager. I stand in unanonymity with the city and its position on such issue. In the spirit of, you mentioned possible edits and clear communication and a well-documented letter, just a few things that popped out at me. The letter overall could use a little proofreading, I think. I'm assuming, first of all, that it's dated September 25th in anticipation of being sent shortly after the Fourth Tuesday of the month. Good enough. Understood. Section 1, paragraph 3. The dialogue during this board meeting revolved around the airport's proposed short term. Short term should both be hyphenated and strike the N, term, T-E-R-M. Under request, again, section 1 requests rhetoric, rhetoric. 2 includes elected officials from local jurisdictions and other stakeholders affected. Effective should be striked, replaced with affected, A-F-F-E-C-T-E-D. And also further along, section 3, referring to subsection B in the first line, the ARRF remaining on the south side of the airport is hyphenated, should be one word. And I just have one question, which would probably be best answered by yourself, Mr. City Manager, or counsel, City Attorney Lorca. Back to section 1 and communication, the dialogue during this board meeting revolved around the airport's proposed short-term projects, yet discussion must include ties and consequences of the short-term projects to the long-term proposal. The term must implying legal obligation. As for what's being discussed now and what may be on future agendas, some clarification there, should that be included, or should the language be altered there? I only ask through personal experience, and I'll just digress briefly to a, one comparative example, I went to a scoping meeting for the Fortag, for the Forto Regional Trail in Greenway. They were discussing the entirety of this project, from Safeway to Outpast and towards Marina and whatnot. They did not detail so much about the Frog Pond area. They did, however, allude to future developments around the north and the east side to improve the trail, and when I inquired, they simply said, "That's not, that's not part of this project at this time." So that was the shutdown there. So I was under the impression that they were not legally obligated to disclose what their future intentions, proposals, or plans may be relative to the current plan. Otherwise, those are the only things that I noted, and otherwise I support the letter entirely.
Thank you, Commissioner Hallick. Those are, those are great edits, and I'm embarrassed that you caught that level of grammatical edits, but I appreciate the close read very, very much. With regard to the paragraph 3 of, under subsection 1, their communication, I think that needs a rewrite to clarify some of the, some of the points in there about what board meeting we're talking about. But to your, to your point about the must, we'll relook that as well with city attorney. I think the point we're trying to make there is that, is that there's a need to tie the short to the long term and not parse them out and discuss them discreetly, but we'll make sure that we're on the right side of sort of what needs to go in there from a legal perspective prior to taking it to council.
I agree, and thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Hallick, thank you for that detailed review. Really appreciate that. So I'm gonna move on now to Commissioner Krieger.
All right. Yeah, I pretty much just concur with everything that's going on here. The, it's too bad we have to keep doing this. I agree. I think it was Vice Chair Hayworth said, "We'll probably do it again." But it's good to get it on the record. Can't be, can't be stated much more clearly. We don't want the road. Any idea that we do want the road is, well, that would be a misunderstanding of how people in Delray Oaks feel. So let's just get it on the record and just wait for them. It might try to do it again, and it's just a matter of time. But yeah, thank you. Let's, let's get it up there, and let's, let's get it entered, and hopefully it won't bother us for at least a couple of years.
Okay, thanks, Gary. What I'm gonna do, Commissioner Jack Shaw is having trouble getting back into the meeting, and there's a potential that Commissioner Wood is gonna be able to call in. So what I'm going to do is send it out to the public for any comments, and then if any of those commissioners are able to get back into the meeting, I will then go to them to see if they have any comments or questions. So at this time, what I would like to do is send it out to the public for any comments or questions. Okay, Kim Shirley?
Thank you, Chair Donaldson. Oh, let me, yeah. So I'm really happy to see this letter. I know that we've been battling this for decades, and so it's nice to see something go through the Planning Commission. I'm also really excited about the roundtable, and I really hope that that is emphasized, because I feel like there needs to be some standardized communication, and we need to have a better working relationship with the airport, so that they don't come and all of a sudden spring these ideas on us. So I feel like ever since we started No Road, DRO, I've been attending all of the Airport Board meetings, and every time I attend, I learn something new, and it's just because I'm sitting in that board meeting with them. And so if we have an opportunity to meet with other jurisdictions and also with the airport, I think it would be beneficial to our city, so that we can anticipate their changes and we can work together with them. So I'd really like to emphasize the roundtable and hope that we can move forward with that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Kim. And Ken Rutherford had his hand up. Go ahead, Ken.
Thank you, Chair Donaldson and Kim. Just want to wish you the very best, and thank you also. Disappointed to hear that you're leaving, but excited for you, so congratulations on that. Yeah, a few things. Mine won't be so positive, probably. I'm a little confused about the protocol of what's going on, why it's before the Planning Commission. With that aside, I would ask that this letter strictly address the issues that we're concerned about, and that would be the timing of notice to Delray Oaks and the north, the access through Delray Oaks. All the other stuff I think is important, roundtable, ARF, where the location of the ARF is, all those are important issues, but I think that this letter should specifically only address their attempt to shift from short term to long term access through Delray Oaks, and our opposition to that, and showing them that it's in our general plan, opposing that, and then the timing, the notice that they gave us to respond was very short, and I think that those two issues should be in this letter. The other issues, roundtable, the suggestion that ARF stay on the south side should be included in a separate letter of our suggestions and communications with the airport. We shouldn't lose focus of what we're responding to. We're responding to their change from short term to long term on that access road, and to dilute that with all the other additional information, I think would not serve Delray Oaks or our residents well. I'm disappointed that more city leaders did not come to the Monterey Airport Board meeting and speak up. We notified city staff that this was gonna be occurring, because we were, we were given notice by the agenda, and I'll forgive Dino, because he was on vacation. Welcome back, Dino. It's good to see you again back here. Hopefully you had a nice vacation. But I would hope that our city leaders would attend these meetings when they can and speak up. Three of the residents spoke up about this change. We were very concerned about it. I also think that the letter lets Chair Lefal off the hook by simply stating that she suggested that this road would not be done while she's on the board. She in fact stated that this access road through Delray Oaks is not on anyone's mind of the staff or the board of the airport. That's a very different characterization of what will occur with that road, and we need to not let her off the hook by saying that she just simply said it wasn't gonna be done on her watch. She said it wasn't on anybody's mind at this time to put a road through Delray Oaks, and we need to be firm on that. So I would delete all of that. I would delete the information about ARF. Why is Delray Oaks concerned about where their ARFF building goes? That's not our concern at this point, unless it impacts the residents of Delray Oaks, and I don't see that it does. So I don't think that should be included. I also don't like the fact that we're suggesting that they use the north access service road as access to the general aviation road throughout to Highway 68. Again, unless that benefits the residents of Delray Oaks or the city of Delray Oaks, we should not be making that suggestion. That is not something that I would support or propose at this point, because FAA has said they can't put that access road that close to the runway or the landing area. So if we go back and we read what the FAA has said, they've said they can't use that north access service road for access to general aviation. So we're saying, "Look, you can't put the road through Delray Oaks, because FAA said you can't do it because of our general plan." But now we're saying, "Well, go ahead and put it through the service access road, even though the FAA said you can't use that because of the landing area and the runway." So I would delete that. I think that should go out. We also shouldn't be saying that we support the relocation of the hangars. I don't think the city should be taking a position one way or the other, whether we support the relocation of the hangars. If we support it, it should be something that benefits the city of Delray Oaks or the residents of Delray Oaks. I don't think the relocation of these hangars benefits us as a city or the residents. In fact, I think the construction and the demolition and all of that's gonna be a detriment to some of the residents that live on Rosita, and so I don't think we should be taking a position. If we do take a position, it should certainly not be in support of that relocation, unless somebody can give us a reason why it's good for the city. I think those are the issues that I have. I know that, you know, again, the roundtable's a great idea. A lot of these are great ideas, but I think this letter should be limited to the very issue, the road access to Delray Oaks, and the timing of the notice they gave us with respect to that change. Thank you. That's it.
Okay, Ken, thank you so much. There's some great comments, and in addition to this being an opportunity for everybody to go on the record, it's also an opportunity to get that feedback and those comments, so we could make the letter even that much better before the city council takes a look at it and sends it to the airport. So thank you so much for those comments. Are there any other public comments out there?
I would like to be heard, Chairman.
Okay. I'm sorry, I heard someone who, anyone, other comments?
Frederica?
Yes, thank you. I'm not sure where to raise my hat on the reaction.
Go ahead, Frederica.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, planning commissioners. I too, along with some other residents, including Ken and Kim Shirley, attended many of the Airport Board meetings in the past, and I can honestly say that the roundtable is an excellent idea. Perhaps we'll have more transparency and a better, open communication between the airport and all of those that are on city planning, city council, city manager, because what is being said on some meetings isn't being recalled or totally brought forward in different meetings. Now we've got a letter, and that has been, from my point of view, something that has been their MO as far as giving a short turnaround and/or very quick turnaround, and... been their MO as far as giving a short turnaround and/or very quick turnaround and making it really difficult to respond accurately. I think Ken has some excellent suggestions and recommendations, and I just thank you for considering that roundtable or putting that into motion, and I look forward to hearing how that turns out. So, thank you.
All right, Frederica, thank you so much for those comments. Are there any other public comments? Okay, not seeing any. I do see, though, that we've had somebody that called in. I'm wondering if that is either Commissioner Jack Shaw or Commissioner Wood.
Can you hear me, Scott?
Yes. Go ahead, George. We're still in the comment phase, so please, go ahead. Any comments or questions that you may have?
Well, I've missed out on close to 25 minutes of meeting, unfortunately. Somehow, I got cut off on my computer, so anyhow, my only, it's, I've said this on and on, and I know what it's, for what it's worth, I know what our general plan is, but, you know, the airport is pretty big. It brings in, I'm sure, millions of dollars into revenue into the greater Monterey area. And at one point, we were going to approve a access road at our industrial park, and I've often felt that if we allowed that, that it would give us some amount of leverage on things that would or would not happen over there. So it would give us some negotiating power for a lot of stuff, but as it sits right now, we're not allowing them in there, and I'm always sort of worried about they'll just step on little Delray Oaks and say, "To heck with you guys." So that's just my little opinion.
Okay, George. Thanks so much for calling back in, and, yeah, hopefully, you can hang in there and not get cut off until the meeting's over. So thanks for calling back in.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other public comments? Okay, not seeing any. Once again, I wanted to get this on the agenda so that not only could we get the comments from the planning commissioners, but also taking that feedback from the public, not only to get on the record, but also to reiterate our stance as a city so it's clear, no ambiguity whatsoever with it. And I, like the overwhelming majority of our residents, am against the north side access road for all of the reasons that the letter states, and I think there's been some great comments where we can emphasize and adjust that letter to make it even stronger, to get that message across as clearly as possible. So thank you so much for all of those comments, all the planning commissioners, and from the public. Now, ultimately, as the city manager states, what we need to get to as a planning commission is recommending that this, that the city council approve this letter either as written or with the edits that have been mentioned. So in terms of a motion and in terms of where we ultimately want to go with this, that's the direction we need to go. So with that, I'll entertain any motion from any of the planning commissioners.
I'm trying, I'm having some difficulty trying to figure out how to state a motion on this. I mean, it sounds like Dino was talking about that there are some things that he and Alex wanted to look at, if I read that correctly. So I'm not sure how to form a motion.
Okay. City Manager?
If I may? Thank you. Thank you, Chair. The comments from Commissioner Halleck are crystal clear. Those edits make absolute sense to me. The rewrite of the paragraph, the third paragraph of under communication is something that I'll take a look at with the city attorney to ensure that there's some clarity in that paragraph. The recommendations made by Ken Rutherford were fairly extensive, and I did not follow them all as we were going through the discussion. I would, I'm happy to go back and look over the tape of the meeting and look at each of them in turn and potentially integrate some of those as we prepare to go to council. In general, my staff opinion on Ken's comments is if you want me to craft, if you want staff to craft a very narrowly focused letter, as he suggested, I would recommend directing us to do that tonight. I do not, as your city manager, I do not see harm in the letter as crafted here. I think it contains a lot of good points here that are reflective of our community. It is more broad than the precise points in the addendum, but there's no harm in that. The dilution argument, you know, could be made if there was some punch that would go with a more narrow letter, but I just can't think of where that might help us as long as we're clear in stating our opposition to the road here. So there was a lot that Ken sort of laid out there that I don't want to discount on the whole, and I'm happy to go back and look at the tape, but if the intent is to direct us for any particular edits there, whether it's a narrowly focused letter or one of the points that he made throughout, I'd like that direction tonight. Otherwise, what staff is looking for is something along the lines of a motion to take the letter to city council as edited and then fill in that blank, as edited, either with Commissioner Halleck's comments, with some of Ken's comments, or however you want us to edit it for their adoption. So that's, from the staff, that's what we're looking for, and we don't need to do a, you know, finite editing here as a group from the dais, and I don't want to put anybody in this position of having to do that as commissioners. But, you know, broadly, is the letter good? Yes or no? Do you want a very narrowly focused letter? Yes or no? That would be helpful to us in crafting the letter we take to the council. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for those comments, Dino. One of the things that I would like to do is at least offer the opportunity to our city attorney, if he has any comments or maybe even a question. So Alex, is there anything that either you would like to add to the discussion, or do you have any specific comments regarding anything the city manager has just said?
Thank you, Chair. No, I think the city manager hit the nail on the head. I think the broad direction of, do we keep it as presented or pursuant to Mr. Rutherford's? Narrowing, I think, is a threshold issue that the commission should consider, and from there, I think Dino and I can make the edits, and certainly will go through and have one more grammar check, and I will go through and with a fine-tooth comb and make any edits like that. I think if the motion was along the lines of the scope you're looking for and then the grammatical edits and then subject to just, you know, a once-through by the city attorney and the city manager, I think that that's the path forward. But as a threshold, I think the decision as to the scope should be made.
Okay, thank you, Alex. So I think what really should happen here is absolutely we take into account the edits that Commissioner Halleck had mentioned, and keep the document broad-based and allow the commission then, if they want to take into consideration either any of the specific comments that the planning commissioners have made or any members of the public have made, then they could make that adjustment at that point. So that way, we've got a consistent document that we can provide to the council, and they'll have the opportunity, too, to narrow it down if they need to. Commissioner Halleck?
Will you entertain, you're entertaining a motion at this time, Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry, I have my hand up. I maybe didn't see. I do have a quick question.
Yeah, go ahead, Gary.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, so I was trying to do the digital etiquette thing here. All right, two quick questions. City manager, you know, is there a time limit if we need to get this in? Just, I didn't see.
No, there is no time limit at this point, Gary, because the addendum's been adopted, and this is an after-the-fact comment letter. I think what we want to do is try to be timely and get it to the council on the 22nd if we can, but there's nothing statutory that is driving that.
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm, but I understand the timeliness. And I just wanted to make sure that I understood, you are going to rewrite the little, actually, it's like a sentence that talks about the, how the short term ties into the long term.
Yes.
You did say that was going to get rewritten and further explained, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I thought you did. I just wanted to make sure. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Gary. Go ahead, Commissioner Halleck.
I think at this time, I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we accept and approve the document as crafted to include the aforementioned grammatic edits and concerning section one, paragraph three, the legal language to be addressed as needed by the city manager and/or the city attorney, and that this be referred to city council for further review.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a second by Commissioner Jack Shaw, and what I would like to do then, Karen or Kim, is go by name vote.
Aye.
Commissioner Jack Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Krieger?
Aye.
Commissioner Burton?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hayward?
Yes.
Chairman Donaldson?
Yes. Okay, the motion passes, and once again, thank you so much for all your comments. I think ultimately, those comments and this whole discussion is going to make for a better document that the city council can review and ultimately send to the airport and send the strongest message to them. So once again, I appreciate the work done by the staff and all of the input from not only the commissioners, but our residents, our citizens as well. So thank you so much. Next item on the agenda is announcements and comments by the planning commissioners. Do we have any?
I would like to say, unfortunately, I got cut off with the computer, my internet connection, and I lost train of thought during the call-in. I think the letter is very good. I like the idea of the roundtable, and that is it for me. Thank you.
Commissioner Burton?
Yeah, in chat, I posted, "Thank you, Kim," times 100. I want to make it 101 and say thank you again, Kim, and maybe a virtual thank you round of applause for Kim.
Thank you, everybody.
Next item is, our next meeting will be Wednesday, October 14th at 6:00 p.m., and with that, we are adjourned.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. I forgot to mention Maury. Do you want me to make a quick comment about Maury?
Yes, please.
All right. Thank you, Chair. Commissioners, members of the public, just a quick update on Mr. Maury's conditional use permit. It was obviously agendized, then continued. The input we've gotten from TMC regarding the four tag alignment and requires additional staff work and deconfliction between the landscaping area, that is Mr. Maury's business, and the potential routing for the four tag trail that's going to be built through our city. And in order to ensure that that staff work is done and done right so that it's brought to you, that CUP is brought to you with clear language and a clear understanding of how that CUP is coordinated with the future four tag project, staff is anticipating another 30 to 45 days of staff work, mainly because an engineer is out for a while, a rich deal that we need to work with at TMC, and so that's the reason for the delay. I anticipate it being in November before you, and looking forward to a tight staff package for your consideration at that time. Thank you.
Okay, Dino, thanks. Thanks for that clarification, and I know we've been jumping in and out of sequence here, and I see that Kim Marie has her hand, so I don't want to leave you behind, so go ahead, Kim Marie.
Okay, thank you so much. This is my first meeting, so hello, everybody. I'm a resident on Rosita Road, and I know Karen has a lot of issues with the noise on the airport construction as far as sleeping goes. So I speak for Karen, and I agree with Ken, if we don't have to do construction better. But I actually am here because of, you know, Work Memorial Park and as well as Mr. Maury. And just as a resident, and, you know, I've heard that Work Memorial Park was donated to the city as a park for residents. You know, I think it's important for all of us to make that a more presentable place for our residents. I'm very happy with Delray Park. It's excellent, it's beautiful. Frog Pond, I know it's not a city park, but it's still a wonderful addition to our city, and I think that as much as we can do, and as a resident, I'd like to, you know, just let everyone know that I am interested in keeping that an open space. I know we've got the trail going through and, you know, other things, but a lot of times, it is unpleasant to walk through, you know, next to Mr. Maury's. A lot of times, it's not very neat and clean. It's kind of, I don't know, it's, I don't feel comfortable sometimes, and I think we can make it a more welcoming space and a more asset to our community. So thank you for letting me speak up, and thanks a lot.
Okay, thank you, Kim Marie, for your comments. And so with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for attending.